I'm Kushe, uh, Shunand, uh, Chair of Committee. And to staff, uh, and to ist, I give, oh, teacher, he been a give you. Why she uh, so does um, uh, be be had a did see Shunand, uh, oh, she Hilaah teacher. Uh, laa, so does um, da, adadilneel. It a da, the kui da, beda dilna. But eh, Kho, Shunand, uh, do, da isinolts, I give, uh, so does um, she da hollon, eh, da Hilaah teacher. But eh, Kho. Uh, keh, briondo, oh, lekho, uh, astan, she mado, yadl, he trah. Eh, dey, yeah, um, he trah, eh, eh, inna. Yow, na, oh, dey, no, beha, but eh, Kho. So da, kui che, oh, the, she, she, oh, the, she, he, 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 ah, oh, Kho, eh, na, si, eh, eh, she, Ika. Ah, he, na, go, Kho.
I do could also dead to say could do Herman Daniels Junior. I don't know, it's like a bit funny. I don't know, I can see it. It was a lot of eight dollars. Has got though eight dollars. I don't think it's leaning on a crazy night. Eight dollars. Oh, that I can hear you need all the people in here. I don't know, but I'm not sure if it is. Not just an old date. So I don't know, I don't know. He didn't go. Not only steam. But I thought it was okay. He would have a banana. It's good. I don't know, chapter official. The hell no, don't. Crazy, not official. The hell no, go. It don't hear it in me, though, let's go. Um, Mr. Chair, I want to applaud all this. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Kealan Begay Junior.
Uh, Chairman, uh, good morning. That is, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I had a Chairman now, I don't already see member. Uh, good morning. Uh, could also dead to hang around here tonight. No, I need a dollar. It's a hundred dollars. I don't know, they should be eight dollars. Coco, so I'll send that to them. But I'd like to show you. Just a, uh, best of the journey. She gives I don't. I had to tell them, tell it goes, ah, not well. I don't know. But I could all change it. So there's a chairman, see her.
Thank you, honorable colleagues. Jay, I have Rick Nez and she have one son in China. I was there to achieve in Washington. So now I'm going to achieve it. Okay, I need a channel. I thought I had an end. It's not a chapter. But I'm sure that she gave. Hey, I have hog back San Juan in a new Zara for full and Burnham and Newcomb. As well as all one hundred and ten chapters that we serve RDC. Okay. Jay, I have Honorable Arusso, Chairman So.
Good morning, yeah, it's been a, uh, Jay, I are also in the city. Now, I can't know, too, yet. In the next. And she's a couple of high basis. Look at the night, I should say, it's not a genie, it's not a. But I didn't know. Who knows, this is a day even best one. But I didn't know. I did, uh, I, yeah, but I did. So I don't know, but I know. I don't know, that he can, uh, not do. Yeah, in China, come, uh, he, uh, he do. Okay, I'm not, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable So. Let's go to stuff, Mr. Tahi.
Good morning, Chair members of RDC. My name is Rodney Tahi. I'm the Legislative Advisor for Resource and Development Committee. I'm Kiaani and sent you kidding and Reggie from Steamboat, Arizona. And I want to say thank you for that prayer this morning, Honorable Walker. It's a great way to start the day. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi, Ms. Springer. Press star six.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Morning, this is Heather Springer. I'm a legislative assistant with the Office of Legislative Services assigned to the RDC Committee. I am from Omaha, Nebraska. My clients are sitting out visiting Omaha. Um, I'm from Texas in Mexico. Good morning, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Good morning. Yeah, the Resources and Development Committee members, don't know if you need it. I don't, um, those who are on the call for today's presentation. She Mariana Khan, that's she, you know, and she need it. I told you, cleaning the ship. I'm a vicious chain. I should say, that should change in your kind of that's another. I hear her, she, I, Miss John ago. Uh huh. So being so that. Be losing. That was a most precious prayer. If, if we could study all of the beautiful nuances in that prayer, we, we would benefit. But we don't have the time today. It was beautiful to listen to, and I certainly enjoy it. And it adds to the bounty of our meeting today. Um, Mr. Chair, I will be listening to the meeting and be ready for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. From Speaker's office, Ms. Yaco.
Hi, good morning, Chairman, members of RDC. Uh, this is Melinda Arviso Siaco, Saint Anthony's long Kiaani vicious chain. What is in you, that should change out, that should change another legislative staff assistant for the Office of the Speaker here in Woodrock, Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yaco. Appreciate the work that you do with RDC from Speaker's office also. Thank you. From the Office of the President, Vice President, Mr. Philfred.
Good morning, Chair, members of Resource and Development Committee and everybody that's listening. And, uh, Davis Philfrid issue in share from Office of the President, Vice President as an executive staff assistant. So later, I hope it's a big day. I did it. They get to know you, get to cheat me. I should be vicious chain. And I should change to the chain, the channel. Yeah, it do. And I'll be listening in.
Thank you, Mr. Philfred. Mr. Manny Wheeler from the museum.
Good morning, and thank you, Honorable Chair, uh, for, um, allowing me to introduce myself. Uh, thank you, you have for the prayer this morning as well. Um, my name is, uh, Manuelito Wheeler. Uh, you know, she had sit on Janine's law. Yeah, it touch you need a vicious chain. To hit leaning, it should change Kiaani, a passion, not it. My take is a set my shop. Um, I'm the Director of the Navajo Nation Museum, as I've stated before, and I, I look forward to, um, our presentation on our legislation this morning. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Martin Begay, Parks and Rec. Martin Begay. And Mr. Dave Zeller, NAPI.
Good morning, Chair. Uh, thank you for allowing me to listen in today. I know that Mr. Hasky is also on the line as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Lionel Hasky.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the RDC Committee. Yeah, it been it. My name is Lionel Hasky with NAPI. Meet you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the Department of Justice? BIA?
This Eugene Bedoni from Chichimbito Chapter. Good morning. Uh, good to listen to you guys. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Mr. Badoni, thank you for joining us. Have a good day. Anybody else on the call wishes to introduce themselves? Do we have our colleagues on the call? Mr. Honorable Vince James, Honorable Eugene So, Honorable Nathaniel Brown? None? Okay. We'll go down to number three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Mr. Tahi, could you read the agenda, please? Fuck it.
Chair members of RDC, the proposed agenda reads as follows. Resource and Development Committee of the Twenty Fourth Navajo Nation Council. Regular meeting Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, ten AM. Presiding Honorable Ricky Nez, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior, Vice Chairperson. Location, Viatela Communication. One, call the meaning to order, roll call, invocation and announcement. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and approving their journals. March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, April eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Five, receiving reports, none. Six, old business, legislation number zero zero five three dash twenty-two. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee approving amendments to the plans of operation for the Navajo Parks and Recreation Department and the Navajo Nation Museum and the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources. Sponsor Honorable Mark A. Freeland. Seven, old but new business. A, legislation zero zero six one dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committees approving a change in Exhibit E to C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen for the Chinley Chapter by deleting the waterline Spider Rock Phase two point five project and adding the waterline and sewer Spider Rock Phase two point five project by changing the funding year period and by designing, by designating the, the Water Management Branch as agency that, that will administer the added project sponsor Honorable Eugene So. B, legislation zero zero six three dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Health, Education, and Human Services, Budget and Finance, and Nubikit Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council approving one million, six hundred thousand out of the Sisasun Fund to cover the funding shortfall for the Gannato Chapter Senior and Veteran Center Project. Reapproving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C Section two five zero one through Section two five zero eight. Sponsor Honorable Vincent R. James. C, legislation zero zero six four dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Nubikit Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund for the Chishpotoe Convenience Store Fuel Station Project. Approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C Section two five zero one through Section two five zero eight. Sponsor Honorable Nathaniel Brown. D, legislation zero zero six six dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Nubikit Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council approving seven million, six hundred and fifty thousand from the Sisasun Fund for the construction of the Chishpotoe Multipurpose Building. Approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C Section two five zero one to two, Section two five zero eight. Sponsor Honorable Nathaniel Brown. D, legislation zero zero seven zero dash twenty-two. An act relating to Resource and Development approving the grant of right of way to Continental Divide Electric Cooperative, Inc. for the Gilbert Yaasi Power Project located on Navajo Nation Trust Land in Chishtatah Chapter Vicinity, McKinley County, New Mexico. Sponsor Honorable Seth Damon. E, legislation zero zero seven three dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee approving a change to C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen Exhibit D for the Cameron Chapter by relocate, by real allocating six hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars in Sisasun Fund to the new chapter building project sponsor Honorable Thomas Walker Junior, co-sponsor Honorable Seth Damon. F, legislation zero zero seven four dash twenty-two. An action relating to Resource and Development Committee and the Nubikit Committee opposing the United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess operation and management user fee on the Navajo Agriculture Product Industry and the water user for the Navajo Indian Irrigation Project. Sponsor Honorable Purnell Halona, co-sponsor Honorable Raymond Smith Junior. G, approving the Resource and Development Committee regular meeting to be held in person at Naihizi, New Mexico, at Naihizi Chapter starting at eight AM. H, approving Resource and Development Committee's attendance and participation in the National Center for American Indian Enterprise Developments Reese's two thousand twenty-two conference from May twenty-third through twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two in Las Vegas, Nevada. Eight, closing meeting announcements in German. Chair members of RDC, that is the proposed agenda read into the record. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahi, for reading the agenda. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Good morning. I'm motion for. Honorable Freeland, thank you. There are second. Chair, I'll second Stuart. Honorable Stuart, thank you. And then, uh, any comments or questions?
Mister Chair.
Um, okay. Ms. Khan.
Um, Mister Chair, I had, um, sent, uh, Resources and Development Committee, uh, an email just fairly recently um, with the idea of, um, scheduling a, um, work session or leadership meeting regarding, um, rules and regulations for, um, cemeteries and such. There was, um, a series of leadership meetings regarding this issue. And, um, there was going to be a follow-up on, um, a follow-up leadership meeting. Um, there has been, um, requests for, um, me to draft private family cemeteries, and, um, I was needing some guidance from the, or information from the Resources and Development Committee on that issue. I was thinking that, uh, uh, a follow-up leadership meeting with regards to cemeteries and rules and regulations would be helpful. And, um, that, that was my suggestion, Mister Chair. I don't know if you, the committee would like to schedule such a meeting or wait for, uh, scheduling such a leadership meeting or work session. Thank you, Mister Chair, that was my, my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Khan, Honorable members of RDC. Uh, if you would, motion for Amendment One to add this request, which is very important to have this discussion on family cemeteries that is Khan just indicated also on the email that was sent to us. So if we would, and, uh, perhaps we could have an amendment one to add that to the agenda.
Chairman, I'll, I'll motion freedom.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Freeland. Second. I'll second Chair Stuart. Thank you, Honorable Stuart, for that. I do. Any comments or questions?
Chairman.
Mr. Tahi.
Yes, the, the recommendation from Ms. Khan. Um, I did communicate with Roderick Begay on this. I will, I believe it's a leadership meeting, um, regarding this familial burial. And the last meeting, according to Mister Roderick Begay was March fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, which was a leadership meeting. And per his recommendation, I'm going to fully execute what was left off under Ms. Shami Begay while she was the Legislative Advisor. So it will be a leadership meeting that will be scheduled for I.
Thank you, Mister Tahi, for that. So, and, uh, I, I go next, she know it's a data leadership meeting to have a discussion with the Department of Justice and as well as DNR, Land Department. And leadership could already seen it, then again, and I will add that, um. Honorable Freeland. I'll be a good day, dear.
I'll be a chairman.
Okay, Honorable Stuart.
Oh, big on.
Okay. Uh, Koshila. Any comments or questions on Amendment One?
Chairman.
Yes.
Before the journals, I have not received the March thirtieth and the Ma- April eighth journey of journal. While Ms. Teresa Woody was still with us, I've asked IT retrieve it. Unfortunately, IT is out in the field at the moment. So if we can remove the journals from the agenda, we can have that at the, on the next RDC regular meeting.
Thank you for that, Mister Tahi. Honorable Freeland. Do you concur to remove March thirtieth and April eighth, uh, journal off the agenda until we receive the journals?
That's fine, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Tahi.
Uh, Koshila, Honorable Stuart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on Amendment One?
Chairman.
Yes.
On, under new business, letter G, um, the date for that in-person regular meeting at Naihizi, New Mexico, at Naihizi Chapter, the date would be May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. If that can be noted, um, this will be on the approved agenda. I'd appreciate it. Back to you, Chairman.
Okay, we'll have that as well, Honorable Freeland. Just a correction as part of Amendment One on, under new business, G, at May eleven, twenty twenty-two. Honorable Freeland.
Okay, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Stuart.
Yes, Chairman, that's good.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions, and, uh, on Amendment One? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, yes? Who says? And, uh, Koshila.
Here, Honorable Chair, this is.
Yes.
I was just saying how come there's two D's?
There's two what?
These, the letter D.
Okay, thank you. Um, none, uh. Honorable Freeland, let's correct this. Um, legislation number zero zero seven zero will be E. And the next one is zero zero seventy-three
I'll be a.
Will be F. Everything will just go down. So the leadership request will be J. Thank you for catching that. Honorable Freeland. I'll be a good day, everything will shift down.
Yeah, Chairman.
Honorable Stuart.
Yes, Chairman, agree.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, RDC? On the amendment. I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I will green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman, Kialan, it's green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stuart.
Green.
Thank you, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on Amendment One. And, uh, back to the main motion. Any comments or questions? None. Uh, Koshila. We'll go ahead and vote on the main motion, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
I vote green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Chairman, I can't about screen, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stuart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries, we have an approved agenda before us, and, uh, that's a moving down to number four, reviewing and approving journals, none. We removed it because we don't have the journals sent to us. Number five, receiving reports, there's none. Number six. Old Business Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Twenty-Two, sponsor Honorable Freeland. I believe this was already read into the record. And there was a motion by Honorable Begay, second by Honorable Stuart, to have a work session, which we did this past week in, and, uh, we do have Honorable Freeland on the call with us. Um, are there any comments or questions?
Chairman.
Yes.
It, just for the record, this legislation was read into the record on Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. You are correct, um, Key Allen Begay Junior motion for this. It was a second by Wilson C. Stewart Junior. In addition, there is an amendment to this legislation, a correction. Ms. Mariana Khan emailed this correction on Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at nine forty-nine AM. I have the amendment that needs to be read into the record regarding this legislation.
Thank you, Mister Tahi. If you would, please read the amendment language into the record, and then we'll have a motion and a second for Amendment One.
Chair members of RDC Amendment Number One for Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Twenty-Two. Read as follows, one, page two, line twenty-nine, strike the word five and insert four. Two, page three, line one, strike the word six and assert five. Three, read number and re-letter succeeding paragraph, sections, and/or exhibits accordingly, if necessary. And this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment, which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services with notices to the sponsors of the legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical change, changes. Chair, that is Amendment Number One read into the record. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mister Tahi, Honorable members of RDC. Let's have a motion and a second for Amendment One. Motion, Stuart. Honorable Stuart, thank you. Honorable Gay, thank you. Any comments or questions on Amendment One? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gay.
Chairman, I can't about screen, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland.
Green, this is Daniel.
I'm a green teacher.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland, thank you. We got your green votes. Honorable Stuart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on Amendment One. Any other comments or questions on the main motion? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I will green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Chairman, I can't about screen, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stuart.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels. Honorable Daniels. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Twenty-Two.
This is Daniel, I vote green.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Daniels. Honorable Daniels, vote screen. That changes the vote from four. That changes the vote from four to five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries on Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Twenty-Two. On to number seven, new business, Shunanda.
Honorable Chair, this is Douglas Begay. I just want to let you know that I'm on the, uh, line with you guys too.
Chairman?
Thank you, Honorable Begay, for getting on the call. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Honorable, will stay on the call with us. New business legislation. Yes?
Chairman, if I, if I could just say something real quick.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Honorable colleagues and staff, I, I just wanted to say thank you, um, to my colleagues, RDC, RDC. And of course, the work session, uh, that was held on Monday at Twoneros, um, getting an understanding of what the legislation was about and, you know, uh, want to say thank you, of course, to Mr. Martin Begay and, and Mr. Manuel Lito Wheeler, as well as Division National Research to all of our Navajo Nation employees as well. Thank you. Um, I want to give a shout out real quick to Mr. Eugene Bedoni as well. I think he's a Greasian official for Chilbato. He used to be a former champ bareback rider. Always wants a champ, always a champ, Mr. Bedoni. So good morning to you, and I believe that you were, you were, um, uh, uh, member of the, uh, AIRCA and, and back in the day. So good morning to you. So, Eda Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. You're certainly welcome. Ado, Mr. Bedoni. There you go. Thank you for joining the call with us. We're on new business. A, Legislation Zero Zero Sixty-One Dash Twenty-Two. Honorable Eugene So, are you on the call? On twice. On three times. B, Legislation Zero Zero Sixty-Three Dash Twenty-Two. Honorable James, are you on the call?
Oh, yeah, there's another.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tahi, could you read this Legislation Zero Zero Sixty-Three Dash Twenty-Two into the record, sir?
Chair members of RDC, you have Legislation Tracking Number Zero Zero Six Three Dash Twenty-Two, date March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Health, Education, Human Services, Budget and Finance, and Nubikit Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council approving one million six hundred thousand out of the Sisasun Fund to cover the funding shortfall for the Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Center project. Reapproving that the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve in NC Section Two Five Zero One through Section Two Five Zero Eight. Purpose of this legislation to allocate one million six hundred thousand from the Sisasun Fund to cover the shortfall in funds for the construction of the Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Center project. The shortfall is due to a significant increase in construction costs. Chair members of RDC, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which we read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Vince, Vince R. James, Tracking Number Zero Zero Six Three Dash Twenty-Two. An act relating to Resource and Development, Health, Education, and Human Services, Budget and Finance, and Nubikit Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council approving one million six hundred thousand out of the Sisasun Fund and to cover the funding shortfall for the Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Center project. Reapproving that the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve in NC Section Two Five Zero One through Section Two Five Zero Eight. Section one outlines the authority. And section two lists the findings, which includes Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, Exhibit D, Exhibit E, and Exhibit F. Section three is approving one million six hundred thousand from the Sisasun Fund and to cover the funding shortfall for the Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Center project. Reapproving the related expenditure plan. And section four is the effective date. And section five is the savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, which is a le- letter memorandum dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The subject is Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Center project status, which is to all reviewers in the Navajo Nation, from Andy Thomas, the Project Manager, and Marcus Murphy, Project Manager, from DCD Capital Project Man- Management Department. Attaches Exhibit B, which is the memorandum dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to Tamara Begay, Principal in Charge, and Nathaniel Wero, um, Project Manager for the Indigenous Stud- Design Studio. The subject is Ganado Chapter Senior and Veterans Project. Attaches Exhibit C, a letter dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding the Ganado Senior and Veterans Center, the bid documents, review, and recommendation. Attaches Exhibit D, the construct, um, the construction inflation al- alert by AGC, the Construction Association. Attaches Exhibit E, which is the Sisasun Fund Power Line and Chapter Capital Project Expenditure Plan. Attaches Exhibit F, a letter dated August fifth, two thousand twenty-two, to Honorable Seth Damon regarding CJY dash fifty-seven dash oh-two and action relating to the Budget and Finance Committee, Resource and Development Committee, Nubikit Committee, Navajo Nation Council allocating one million four hundred forty-four thousand and thirty-two dollars from the Sisasun Fund to the Capital Projects Management Department on behalf of the Ganado Chapter and approving the adoptive, adoption, the Sisasun Fund Ganado Senior, Senior Citizens and Veterans Center project expenditure plan pursuant to twelve in NC Sections Two Five Zero One through Two Five Zero Eight. Then you have the first report of the Navajo Nation Legislative branch internet public review summary for Legislation Zero Zero Six Three Dash Twenty-Two. Sponsor Honorable Vincent R. James. This legislation was posted on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at six twenty-four PM. The five-day comment period ended April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comments supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is Legislation Zero Zero Six Three Dash Twenty-Two read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I'll motion.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Second.
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. And, 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 this legislation goes on to HSC, Budget and Finance, Nubikia, Chair, and the full council. Do you have any comments or questions?
Chairman, I do. Kialan?
Honorable Begay, okay. Uh, Honorable Vince James, you have twenty minutes to present. Please identify your agents as well.
Yad e, Honorable, um, Chair. Honorable, uh, we can add, addo, RDC members, Resource Development Committee. Yad e, addo, isunaflaiki. Uh, kodo, nisutanto, um, na nilsoziki. Ee ee ya, na oka, nliniki. Kodo Ganado Senior and Veterans, um, Building, ee ee aje. Atta azli, wini zin, ee, addo, nihinana, ilia. Eh, kado groundbreaking, da, dalia. Addo, benada, desh, nesh, do. But that's quite a good, um, bidding process, ba, na, ho, lji, jo. Uh, advertise, aliya, with the, the construction, do. We received bids, na, so, ya, nde, contractors, dan, leni. Eh, addo, adda, that's quite a good, na, lji, jo, the pandemic. Eh, ya, ee, ee, benha, ho, lji, zulinko. Addo, dekui, gosh, addo, la, da, da, tskal, addo, adda, ho, lji, jo, o, ta, na, bel, ho, lji, jo. Ako, kundza, ta, ho, lji, shte, ee, ee, ka, te, be, da, ho, doni, be, kin, do, ta, la. Eh, ni, ta, da, na, da, tskit, zulin, addo, na, na, kwa, ki. Eh, ya, ti, ta, doni, shi, wini, zne, eh, ako, kwa, ki, ee, ee, di, be, on, leni, ni, ta, ba, o, zulin. Na, de, um, bids, da, ilago, ako, contractors, ki, na, so, ya, nde, yis, nelo. Uh, ah, you, eh, ya, ee, be, ti, la, ho, zulin, ako. Ya, lni, eh, xi, in, na, ho, ta, di, de, be, da, ho, doni, ki. Daholo, no, xi, ako, na, li, ba, ho, and, da, t, eh, t, nesh, chi, be, be, da, ho, doni, ki, xi. Adda, xi, ho, da, aw, de, ee, 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 be, da, hui, da, addo, dekui, gosh, xi, khos, eh, da, li, ako, ah, koo, kasta, ni, xi, ta, ah, ya, da, ho, la. Ako, da, aw, ee, ee, ben, hi, ta, ah, zulin. Addo, ako, ee, ee, ben, na, cha, de, ya, ee, kodo, the, the contractors that submitted their proposals, yeah, ee, ee, ah, kasta, ah, ya, da, ho, la, ako. Ako, da, aw, de, ya, ee, ee, um, the bidding process, de, ki, um, ee, ya, nde, yis, nelo, zulin, ako, ako, kwa, ki, ee, ee. Kodo, ni, cha, jop, ah, na, di, ne, ako, di, kwa, ni, ta, ba, o, zulin, ee. Oh, di, la, do, ee, ee, um, si, ha, ton, be, beso, ee, ee, aje, jo, ee, eh, la, do, bol, ta. Eh, di, kwa, ki, da, kui, na, ha, da, xi, de, ya, eh, bi, sa, he, son, de, ta, ne, ki. Eh, aje, ta, ah, ya, ho, da, aw, de, ya, ee, five chapters, eh, be, cha, koli, ah, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. Ako, ee, da, Ganado Chapter, do, has, an, ki, ee, ee, ya, o, ah, you, ha, twi, na, na, don, he, sa, la, so, ki, ya, na, da, ho, kah, ho. Eh, kin, ho, lo, do, le, ta, no, beni, na. Eh, aje, Ganado Chapter, ah, ho, be, beso, si, ha, son, be, beso, ta, la. Et, a, da, ta, ne, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, yeah, la, so, eh, ya, ee, di, kwa, cha, senior, do, veterans buildings. Eh, aje, eh, ya, ee, ba, ba, do, nish, ko, ta, ah, ee, be, ki, ni, ilde, zulin, na, de. Ah, na, nelo, ha, za, nde, ako, jo, eh, addo, eh, ho, ta, ah, ee, be, de, ni, ni, shi, li, addo, an, need, na, ki, na, ha, da. Eh, kwa, ki, ee, ee, ni, ta, do, na, la, so, ako. Eh, adda, de, eh, ya, eh, di, um, based, on, leni, ki, be, ho, doni, ba, o, ki, ki. From the two hu- from the eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, and then the over-projected, overall projected amount, eh, ki, eh, be, ah, eh, ah, do. Legislation, he, da, do, na, ni, so, zin, eh, ako. Addo, na, ha, be, la, da, azli, addo, signing ceremony, da, da, azli, on the, on the site with, um, Honorable President Nez and Vice President Lajer, ako, jo, eh, eh, kwa, ki. Ah, shi, ah, da, ho, doni, la, da, akon, eh, da, um, pandemic, di, da, kos, na, ta, eh, ta, ha, ki, ni, cha, ni, o, aje, o. Ni, ta, eh, ya, ee, ya, na, de, skit, zulin, ako, ta, eh, ee, eh. Ha, ne, sha, na, da, di, no, ako, di, 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 ni, ha, la, ziz, nlini, ki. Na, ta, eh, ya, eh, na, 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 da, xi, eh, kodo, ni, ta, do. Eh, na, nilso, xi, na, ta, no, llini, ki, ah, kodo, xi. Na, o, kah, nlini, ki, addo, na, na, di, kodo, na, so, nlini, ki. Ni, ta, do, so, zhi, la, kodo, da, um, the bidding contractors proposals, ya, nde, yis, nelo, jo, eh, 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 la, eh, la, do, na, ha, be, o, ilia, la, do, ako. Addo, na, na, la, che, ah, na, so, ta, ne, de, ki, ako, eh, da, ako, da, aw, de, ya, eh, eh, um, eh, na, ah, shi, Mr. Andy Tom, eh, ho, ta, eh, eh, na, shi, eh, ho, ta, eh, na, so, nlini, ki, eh, he, ta, zulin, ako. Ako, o, ta, eh, eh, ben, hi, na, ha, ziz, ne, do, ben, hi, na, ha, do, li, shi, na, ta, no, llini, ki, na, o, kah, ki, eh, he, zhi, la, so, eh, kodo. Ha, twi, na, na, ku, koi, la, ta, ah, he, ha, za, nde, eh, ah, de, ta, ako. Addo, na, na, ni, so, la, so, ta, ah, na, na, ta, ako, kodo, la, ta, ah, he, do, eh, ah, de, ta, ah, la, so, daholo, ako. Ako, ta, ah, chi, chi, ta, de, zin, eh, ako, kundza, ta, ni, ho, lji, shi, ako. Ako, eh, 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 kodo, bay, ah, sti, do, beni, eh, ba, wa, na, ho, shi, kah, ho, ni, hi, de, shi, ne, ako. Do, ha, za, xi, la, eh, ho, da, ah, kin, leni, basa, ah, do, leh, eh, eh, yi, che. Bi, che, eh, la, eh, la, do, bi, che, ni, ha, twi, na, na, do, ni, he, sa, la, so, leni, yi, che, chi, oh, eh, do, leh. Ben, na, cha, eh, ya, eh, la, do, ta, ah, ta, ta, shi. La, eh, ya, eh, kwa, ki, chi, ni, he, de, ta, ah, ta, la, shi, eh, ya, eh, koo, ha, shi, so. La, ta, eh, xi, la, ni, he, sa, la, so, dan, leni, be, kin, sa, ah, ni, ben, na, cha, ni, twi, do, sa, ni, ba, gan, sa, ah, ni, ben, na, cha, ni. Jo, kwa, da, aw, eh, eh, ta, ki, so, leh, ako. Ah, la, la, ah, la, shi, zeno, kwa, ki, ni, ya, di, ah. Ah, ah, di, sha, do, da, ba, ho, zeno, ah, ti, ba, ho, sa, ah, ah, aje, ho, ti, it, ah, ba, ho, zeni. John, zin, do, leh, jo, eh, ho, da, aw, eh, ah, ti, zhi, la, so, eh, ya, eh, beni, eh, na, eh, ni, ka, do, kodo, bay, ah, sti, ni, la, ako. Kwa, da, aw, eh, ya, eh, ish, na, na, ho, shla, do, leh, la, shi, na, ta, ah, no, llini, ki, kodo, Resource and Development Committee. Na, ta, ah, no, llini, ki, kwa, da, aw, eh, ya, eh, ni, he, na, ha, ziz, ne, do, leh, leh, ya, ah, kwa, da, do, leh.
Uh, thank you, Honorable James. Do you have any agents?
Uh, the, my agents would be, uh, Mr. Andy, uh, Tom.
Yeah, there you go. Um, Honorable James, so you're done with your presentation?
Oh, and then if there's any question, I'll go ahead and, I'll get assistant, someone, Mr. Andy Tom.
Thank you. Honorable Kialan Begay Junior, you have the floor.
Uh, Chairman. Uh, RDC Member, no, sheniki, good morning. Addo, shunale, kodo, na, so, si, ta, ni, so, zuki, ya, hat, na, do, leh. Um, you know, everything that we do is all in good, uh, intention for our local community and the chapters that we represent, which is good. I really don't have a problem, uh, with any funding request by my colleague, uh, of the, all the legislation that's on today's agenda. Uh, so I, uh, Chairman, um, I'm, I'm, I'm requesting, I don't know, um, uh, with a point of privilege, I don't know if that's allowable on the committee, at the committee level, but do, um, kodo, uh, based on, that's just, in this, sendo, UUFB. Sai, kuna, ki, you know, that the president had sent a statement to the council uh, of his position on these legisla- on, on these funding requests to UUFB and citizen funding. Yes, we are their appropriators and legislators. Uh, and, and I have made a statement, uh, at that time, that, I mean, uh, I think that's our job, and, and, and he has the authority and the position to accept it or approve it or not. I mean, that's his position, but, uh, uh, he is, I guess, his justification in that statement that he provided, that but, ya, ya, no, ta, ha, ki, offer, fun. Eh, di, ki. At, 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 di, zhi, eh, ya, di, ni, da, ha, zo, zit, nek. Ako, ko, unless uh, there's some agreement between that, that, that delegate and the president's office, uh, then I'm sure, uh, it's just something that we, we, we need to know. Because to some extent, I'm kind of like, okay, I mean, maybe that's the rea- maybe, maybe that's the reason why I don't want to, uh, uh, I mean, I, I want to drop at least ten legislation to request for funding. But at the same time, I tried and we tried to do our best, pass all the funding requests through the offer funding. And working with the Division of Community Development, I mean, I, I, I think they're taking their time to see which projects are allowable and which aren't allowable, that each of chapter had presented.
Almost about two hundred billion dollars worth of broadband, uh, funding being available. Uh, as a Navajo nation, I mean, I know they may, they, they submit one, but I believe that's more of a, uh, it's just more for improvement, eh, yeah. But there's no new infrastructure that's going to be built. So these are the big, a bigger area that I believe that as the RDC in, 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 in dealing with infrastructure or community projects that we can pool in together to say that, okay, we have a, uh, I don't know, we could, we could submit a billion dollars worth of projects and see how much money that we could, uh, uh, achieve or receive. So, I mean, just what it's intended for. But yet, um, I know what projects like, but the next five year plan for the, uh, um, the permanent trust fund, uh, interest fund, forty million, uh, be, be kept in the government. I mean, that could have been, uh, additional five more years of, uh, uh, project for Navajo, uh, people. So anyway, I, as a committee of the, uh, RDC, but, oh, you, but, but, oh, you, and, 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 no. But yeah, I mean, yeah, any council, any delegate can introduce some legislation. I mean, that, that, that's our prerogative and that's our, uh, 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 what we can do on behalf of the community that we represent. But, 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 uh, projects, though, and legislation, we get to be, so, but, uh, I believe that there needs to be a letter sent to the president's office and asking the questions that these are legislation and the council will be maybe approving them next, uh, next week. Uh, but, uh, like I said, I mean, I'll be dropping the legislation today to say that, well, I believe somebody is intentionally disrupting, please meet your phone. Uh, but, I mean, as long as I want to speak on this, uh, uh, issues, uh, I mean, there's time unless the chair tells me that, uh, he has sufficient time to, uh, discuss this particular issue, then I'll stop. But nonetheless, uh, I just want to be on record on all of these things. Because, because, and I commend the, uh, the, the, the delegates uh, for submitting and doing all they can on behalf of their community. Uh, equity, equity, uh, only selected delegates seems to be only, uh, being, uh, being treated, uh, uh, differently from the rest. Uh, I'll be requesting probably for, uh, of six or seven broadband, uh, cell tower. Of course, Chairman, so again, uh, that's my request to you as RDC Chair with the consensus by the committee, uh, maybe I'll make a, a directive at the end of the, uh, session, uh, to send that statement to the president. And then, uh, see how we get a response on that particular issue and then also from the, uh, each of the, uh, uh, bigger program like, uh, Department of Economic, Division of Economic Development, Department of Transportation, Division of, uh, Community Development, see what they have and what they are submitting on behalf of the Navajo Nation to this, uh, Ida, uh, 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 infrastructure fund, uh, on behalf of the Navajo Nation, because I know as for broadband, they submitted only fifty-three million. But there's more money being available for the, uh, tribes across the, uh, United States. Projects, uh, select, selection or listing, because I know there's always, uh, talk about the white paper. White paper, sometimes you say that, okay, any of our project, any of my chapter projects is in there. So those are the areas I think that we need to, uh, combine, uh, as far as these, uh, projects. So again, like I said, I just want to be on record making the statement, but again, I'll, uh, continue to support my colleagues for their effort at the, uh, on these legislation requesting for funding. When I do get my legislation in order to get, uh, to, uh, to be on the, uh, uh, maybe at the summer session today, but nonetheless, uh, Chairman, that's my response and my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay. Someone unmuted their phone and. So, I apologize for that and. You do make a lot of sense as far as, um, the letter sent out from the president's office. I believe if the full council, let's say Honorable James is not on RDC, he's on Law and Order Committee and other delegates that are requesting funding, whether it's from UUFB or CUSN. I believe that letter needs to come from Honorable Speaker Damon. We do have Honorable, um, to the president, asking and requesting respectfully, give us an explanation on this letter. Quid pro quo. From Speaker's office, Speaker, twenty-four delegates. From Speaker's office. So, um.
Ms. Khan. Could you also, um, respond to the question by Honorable Begay?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Mariana Khan. I was listening to Mr. Begay's, um, statement and it, it started out with, uh, that he was concerned about the, the parameters of the line item veto. And, but as you know, the line item veto came about through a referendum to the Navajo people and the way that it was written, um, was not terribly clear the way it came out, but, um, my boss, Ms. Dana Barbara, has been looking at the issue as to the parameters of the line item veto. She's not currently in the office right now, but I will, um, speak with her about it and maybe she can address the issue again there at the Navajia Kit Committee. As, as you have brought up, um, the line item veto is, it gives the president the authority to strike through, um, dollar amounts and, um, with regard to the comprehensive budget and something called supplemental funding legislation. Um, and, um, these types of line item vetoes are not, are not available to be overridden or by the Navajo Nation Council through legislation. And that is, that was an authority given to the president through the referendum. Um, I do, I do know, uh, I do recall, um, the president making a statement as to not wanting any more, um, spending from Cusin and the UUFB and that I, that I categorize as a policy statement on his part. I do not, I have not seen anything other than that one statement that he made with regard to that, um, with his, um, his viewpoint on spending from the UUFB and the Cusin Fund. As, um, delegate, um, as Delegate Key Allen Begay has said, the Navajo Nation Council has the authority, the delegates have the authority to introduce any legislation that they wish with regard to expenditures from the UUFB and the Cusin Fund. As we see in this particular legislation that is sponsored by Delegate, um, Vince James. These are, um, within the authority of the, of the council delegates and depending on the action by the Navajo Nation Council, it goes over to the president for his, for his action. Um, with regard to the request for a letter to be sent by the Resources and Development Committee to the president, I agree with, um, Chairman Nez's statement that this letter should be come from the speaker on behalf of the whole Navajo Nation Council with regard to, um, the president being requested to come to speak to the Navajo Nation Council with respect to his position on expenditures from the UUFB and the Cusin Fund. Um, Mr. Chair, those are my, um, um, comments I would make on this particular issue at this time. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. And also, uh, Monsieur Akko, in that letter, uh, add that there is a request to how much funds are available, the current balance in Cusin Funds as well as UUFB. Thank you. Let me go to Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Honorable Daniels.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair. Okay, that would be a question that I would have too. How much is in the Cusin Fund? Okay, one point six million. Okay, oh, yeah, yeah. One million, yeah, so. One billion, two billion. One, one, one billion, one million. But, I appreciate this, uh, legislation that is before us today. Sponsored by, um, Delegate Vince James. The President. Uh, I appreciate that. Cusin Fund. Uh, you, you, uh, Cusin Fund. We have projects at the local level. Representing, uh, Western Agency. We have projects in, in Western Agency. The eighteen chapters, projects that are local. Uh, I, 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 just for example, I. Shanto. Shanto Youth Center. Uh, I, I. Uh, I, I. Uh, I. I support all the chapter projects. Uh, the President. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I. I know, uh, Senior Center. Uh, Gennaro Chapter Senior, um, Veterans Center Project. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I, before the pandemic, I, I. Uh, I. Uh, food delivery. Uh, I. 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 Expect system. Uh, I. Uh, I. Uh, I, during the, the, the head committee, um, you, you're, you're the one that, um, wanted this meeting. So, I, I. So, uh, I. 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 Um, before council, when it goes across, the President. Resolution. Uh, I. Mr. Mr. Chair, um, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels. What is the Cusin Balance? Mr. Tahi, do we have the officer of the Controller on the call?
Chairman of RDC, I, I reached out to OOC and I haven't received a word back from them. I don't see Ms. Elizabeth Begay or Robert Willie on the call. I'm intending to reach out to them to have them join this conversation. Back to you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, because we do need to find out what the current balance is in Cusin as well as UUFB. So, I. Uh, let me go to Honorable Stewart and then back to the sponsor.
Chairman, uh, Shunai, Vice Chair, uh, Shunai K. Uh, brother, Delegate James, for your legislation. Uh, just wanted to make a comment, um, brother, on your legislation last week. I presented legislation before BNF and at that time, BNF had requested a directive to DOJ to, to see if my legislation would have been ARPA eligible or FRF eligible. And that particular legislation, uh, was for renovation and, um, abolishment of homes within a community. And it, that directive went forward, so, and they're, they're requesting that DOJ and the ARPA Office and the FRF Office look into that. But as far as, we did our research on it and we interpreted it the best way we could and we, we couldn't find where it would fit in. But BNF was adamant on saying that it was eligible. So I just wanted to make that comment that in the timeframe between now and your, um, presence or attendance before, um, BNF, maybe it might be best if you can get a statement or a letter to see if DOJ can, um, look at, to see if it is eligible in that area. That's the only comment I, and assistance I want to give you, brother, as far as your legislation goes. For, for, that was my, 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 my comment on this, Shunai, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, Honorable Stewart, about the directive from Budget and Finance. To see if some of these, uh, projects can be funded by ARPA. So, it would be good to hear about that. Let me go back to the sponsor now, Honorable Chanelle, Vince James.
Uh, here, Nana Chanelle, Dan Chair, Honorable, um, Nez. Uh, I, Nana RDC. Uh, I. Uh, I. Chanelle, Honorable Key Allen Begay. Uh, I. 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 Honorable, um, Herman Daniel. Uh, I. 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 Honorable Vince James, President Nez. Uh, I. 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 Supporting resolutions from the chapters. Uh, I.
As well as she has sent funds, Mr. Willie.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, Robert Willie, accounting manager office to controller. Um, the U U F B as of April twelfth, um, the controller's report has twenty-three million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, and that will be released when she's, um, finalizes her report and sends it out. And it's basically the same balance that was available during the winter session. Um, as far as, um, Sahasen, our last calculated balance, which was in February, um, when we did the closeout, was, uh, four hundred and fourteen million, four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. And I did send the, um, Sahasen update to, uh, Mr. Tahie, so maybe you can send that out to the group, which also shows the projects, um, for each one of the Sahasen and the breakdown of the, um, financials. So, uh, thank you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions also. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Willie, for getting on the call. Chairman, Honorable Freeland.
Chairman, uh, colleagues and, uh, staff, my colleagues. Uh, um, my delegate, Honorable Vince James, uh, thank you for the legislation. Although, um, I appreciate it. Um, I do support the legislation. Um, I think it's a very important move, and I remember this being one of our topics of discussion with the state task force when, uh, the chapter was, uh, seeking funding from the state of Arizona. So, um, definitely have my support on this. Although, um, colleagues, my colleagues, um, just to, to kind of remind ourselves that, um, Sahasen was established for situations like this and the creation of capital, uh, projects. And, uh, that was my understanding of Sahasen. Uh, U U F B, A, that's, uh, that could be used in various ways, but it's got to meet certain criteria, of course. And I, I, I'm not on budget and finance, so I can't apologize for what happened to my little brother. But, um, you know, understanding all the questions and, uh, the issues related to how this could be an ARPA project, uh, let's remind ourselves, ARPA is for COVID relief and COVID relief response. ARPA was established to follow sixty-six categories under the US Treasury guidelines. And the expenditure that we wrote are the, uh, initial, um, uh, fund management plan, you know, did give that authority to executive branch. And, you know, the, the expenditure plan that was written on the last legislation really emphasized, uh, if basic infrastructure needs, so addressing the five, that prime, the five primary criteria of basic infrastructure needs. So, um, if, if anyone is to question, uh, maybe, uh, on, on this legislation or cap, other capital legislation, uh, maybe that's a question to ask back is where can that criteria be found? And have they had an opportunity to review this under the US Treasury guidelines as well as eligibility? And it's my understanding, any ARPA or any capital, uh, projects as such do not qualify under ARPA. So, um, I, I know that because my chapters submitted, uh, capital projects, I have a chapter warehouse and had a request for a new chapter, had a request for, uh, chapter warehouse, uh, that were submitted through Division Community Development, uh, portal. But those were deemed ineligible because of the Treasury guidelines, uh, that were attached with ARPA. So, remember, these are federal monies and they're very, very strict with them. Uh, there's certain criterias that we have to abide by. So just remind ourselves of that. When we, um, start talking about, are, are they ARPA eligible? And in regards to my brother's situation at, at, at Red Lake, Navajo, you know, um, unless there's criteria for burnout, for burnout assistance, um, you know, maybe that there's, there is ARPA funding under, under N H A. But as far as I can remember, there's not any sort of funding for, um, uh, any type of the situation that he was going through, unless there's criteria under housing, um, but that's a different situation. So, just wanted to throw that out there, Chairman and colleagues, my colleagues. And I'll be voting green for this legislation. Just re, just remember Cornfields, um, Mr. James. I always tease him about Cornfields, but, hey, I wanted just to say that much, Chairman and my colleagues, my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Bagay, your question to O O C.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Mr. Willie, um, although maybe a response by legislative council as well. Even though we say and they say that the Navajo Nation has or the, uh, undesignated unreserved fund balance has twenty-three million. But by mandate, the U S B has to have certain amount of funding, uh, uh, to be in place. Because anytime we start going under that amount in the U U F B, uh, it, it will be an automatic, uh, the president will have a good justification to say that we can't go below this, uh, dollar amount, uh, for other, uh, may, uh, emergency purpose. And usually I think it's ten percent of the previous, uh, funding allocation, general funding allocation. And maybe, maybe our legislative council can, uh, uh, clarify that. Or twenty-three million is something that need, need, yes, individually, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's a, uh, uh, it's just a little knock or out. And then the required of how much funding needs to stay in the U U F B. And anytime that the nation goes below that, then we have another situation. I want to, uh, maybe Mr. Willie or Ms. Khan be able to, uh, uh, provide additional information to the R D C, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Bagay. Let me go to Ms. Khan and then to Mr. Willie. Ms. Khan?
Mr. Chair, um, and members of the Resources and Development Committee, I am just looking at, um, Title twelve, N N C eight, section eight, twenty J. And that refers to the establishment of reserves. And, um, there is language where it says the minimum fund balance, um, there is a minimum fund balance requirement. Um, and I will read that section J, establishment of reserves. For the general fund, the minimum fund balance for unreserved, undesigned fund balance shall be maintained at a level equal to the amount required to operate the Navajo Nation government for six months, based upon the operating budget for the prior fiscal year, excluding expenditures for capital improvement projects as determined by the controller. And the minimum fund balance may be amended only by two-thirds vote of the full membership of the Navajo Nation Council. And so the exact amount is not written in, um, twelve N N C, section eight, twenty J, but it appears to be, um, tied to the prior fiscal year budget. And I would have to defer to, um, uh, Mr. Robert Willie as to that amount at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Khan. Mr. Willie?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, the fu, the minimum fund balance, um, has been taken out. Um, I'd, I'd have to actually check the calculation to see what the amount is, but it's ten percent of the prior year's budget. Um, also taken out, uh, if you recall in the three branch chief agreement plus the, um, budget resolution, twenty million dollars was reserved, um, in case there was any shortfalls in the next fiscal year. So those are the two amounts that have been reserved. Um, as far as the dollar amount, I'd have to do some research on that to get that to you all if you'd like to see it. Um, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willie. Let me go to Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, um, thank you very much again. This, uh, particular legislation. For this, uh, particular project, senior center and also the veterans building project. Um, one point six million. Um, how does that is to a best of that in nature, leveraging. Is, um, a banana it is kid, let's go to the, Mr. Chair, uh, it is, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your question, Honorable Daniels. Let me go back to the sponsor to answer that question, Mr. James, Honorable James.
Uh, if you had, um, chair, so R D C. Uh, although, uh, although, um, legislation, if you look at, um, the, the, the legislation, a quite a exhibit A, there's a breakdown of, of cost share. According to chapter, do, do, uh, just be honest, the, the twenty-third Navajo Nation Council. Uh, just see how simple, or chapters, that one hundred million debt. So, uh, they divided that up among the five chapter. It, uh, should not, um, Elton, Joe Shepard, uh, he be sure. Of course, the funds for Gennado was eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's how much each of the chapters received, which was Kinchee, Gennado, Cornfield, Steamboat and Jedito. For Gennado, then, of course, they set aside the whole Sahasen year one fund, then, give towards this project. Uh, although, uh, uh, although, uh, although, um, legislation, it, uh, don't know. Uh, 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 C J Y five seven dash two zero. Of course, this is way before the, um, the pandemic. Uh, 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 one, um, C J Y five seven dash two zero, uh, 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 they're not explained. So, because of the pandemic and all of the costs increasing, it came down to, uh, materials increasing, supplies all increasing. And it came down to the bidding, uh, although the bidding proposal submitted, uh, the, uh, based off the increase, during the, uh, became a shortfall of one point six million again. Um, the, the, the C J Y, um, C J Y five seven two zero, uh, the, the, everything is still the same, the square footage and, um, the design, uh, and that they're all the same, nothing hasn't changed. The only thing that has changed is the cost of the materials and supplies to start the construction. That has increased because of the pandemic. The, uh, one point six million, uh, uh, you need.
Thank you, Honorable James. Honorable Stewart, you're up next.
Honorable Stewart? Yes, Chairman, uh, Chair, yeah. Uh, Chairman, I just finished parking, so, um, but my comment again would be just that, you know, if I had the same questions and clarity, um, from what I was asked last week. So I also did my research and everything, couldn't find it. But I'm just saying, you know, that it'll, it may come up tomorrow, but, uh, I don't know. Um, if it will come up to you tomorrow or whenever this, this goes before the next B A F committee meeting. Um, but that was what I ran into. Uh, maybe it was because of my vote, but, uh, but that's just the way I took it too. But, you know, it's, it is, like we said, we're here for the people, we're here for our chapters to do the best that we can do. And that's one thing that I asked, you know, was don't confuse the two. This is a new legislation, the other one was gone, you know, this is a new one. And it still kept coming up, what was, what actions to probably place prior to that particular legislation. That's why I'm saying maybe it was my vote, I don't know. But, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, that, no, that's what I read into it. I was just giving you a heads up. So, uh, I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable members of R D C, any other comments or questions on legislation zero zero sixty-three dash twenty-two?
This is delegate Bagay.
R D C, R D C first.
Chairman Callan.
Honorable Bagay, go ahead.
Uh, Chairman, uh, the other area that I, um, uh, a- again, uh, and then R D C member and, uh, all my colleague, uh, again, don't think that I'm trying to, uh, make this hard for, uh, for passage. But again, these are information that we will need and to justify, uh, of everything moving forward and providing the information to our Navajo people and the community that we represent. Of course, the other area, uh, senior center, no. Of course, the one thing that, um, uh, another area, uh, that we continue and I continue to have problem with my five chapters senior center is supplies. Of course, it's good to, to justify to say that. Yes, we need that. But when it comes to the O and M operation, one, two, I believe two of my chapters, they, they, they go directly back to the reg, to our chapter, the chapter house. Because, uh, the, um, Department of Health, uh, Daltech always say that a building. But the operation. Because especially during the, uh, pandemic, a lot of these, uh, supplies such as food tray, then even the food itself. They always have problem have, uh, running out of these supplies. I, I think that we really need to reach out to, uh, Daltech program. Of course, improving service on the Navajo Nation of our elderly. Uh, de, uh, improving a lot of these facilities or establishing new facilities on the Navajo Nation relating to senior center. I mean, when it comes. Yes, a lot of electricity, other supplies, other, even. I mean, they get, I mean, you know, two years ago, you've, you've, you've heard that, uh, and they buy a lot of these information, I mean, a lot of these, uh, food from bashes locally in bulk. Although they just put it in the freezer. Although, and then, I mean, they, they, they don't, they don't, uh, uh, eat these food right away, fresh. They have to be stored away for about two weeks in order for it to be utilized. So those are the area that I, I, I think, uh, as R D C and the Navajo Nation Council, we got to pressure the program and how they are going to be stepping up and supplying and improving services of our Navajo senior center. Of course, even. Even the, uh, reimbursement to the states. Or we get ourselves in the situation that you guys are not providing actual data, uh, to the state for the accurate information. Based on this legislation. And then I'll probably, uh, request, uh, at the council session specifically from, uh, Daltech of how they continue to, uh, uh, improve the services. So, I mean, a lot of time, uh, they go to, a lot of these Daltech services go to, I mean, the, the program goes to the chapter asking for funding. Of course, and then, of course, one of my chapter, the senior center also was shut down because of the, uh, uh, sewage problem. Of course, oh, eh, we, uh, done, but. Of course, again, I mean, we justified to say that. I mean, that's all good and dandy, but when it comes to O and M, the program is not stepping up to really provide these services. For those of us that are, uh, running these programs within our chapter. Other, like even some of the staff. One chapter is the cook, the manager and the van driver. So they got to cook, then they got to deliver the food, and then they got to come back and do the cleaning and do the paperwork. So, uh, so maybe request to Daltech of how much, uh, what, uh, which chapters are still lacking cooks, which chapter still lacking bus drivers and which, uh, which, uh, which chapter, uh, senior center still lacks, uh, supervisor. And each of these, uh, agency directors. Cause like, for example, one of my chapter, I mean, four years, five years ago, Sahasen funding, but based on that. As of today, they're trying to, after five years, we're trying to, uh, 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 do the drawdown. I mean, five to five years, drawdown. The program, the Division Community Development. So that's the situation that I'm with, uh, uh, that I'm going through with the five chapters that I represent. Uh, as far as, uh, the justification of having a senior center. And then some of them, I don't know if they do this on purpose or if it's accurate, but they take pictures of the food that they get and they guess, guess delivered. I mean, this is what I got. And then those are the pictures that I sent back to Daltech and say that this is what I received from, uh, I, I think it was a, a granddaughter that say that this is what my grandma got today. Called food, uh, I guess, I don't know, uh, yeah, that you conduct, and all of them were just mixed in with, um, um. I don't know. Again, that's not something that we can, I can verify, but that's what they say and what they got. So, uh, based on this legislation, uh, also sent a statement to Daltech and asking them to provide update of their employment and then the status of the food deliveries and the status of how and how much they're, uh, getting supplies through, uh, the, the program. Uh, cause if they're asking for more funding for food trays, and then we do have a problem. Uh, because, or even gas. You know, that the high cost of these, uh, uh, van, um, because, uh, to put gas in these van and then they have to travel, uh, uh, so much uh, to, to different locations. Uh, that the, uh, but, but, uh, at the senior center level. So, uh, Chairman, so that's another area. Aside from, uh, uh, beside this legislation, so we may need to get that information from Daltech, uh, at the council's, uh, session.
Thank you.
Honorable Bagay, I need an. Daltech, uh, senior citizens. Centers. So it'll be in the committee report that we will ask Daltech to provide documentation, perhaps an update report on their employment status, food and supplies at the full council. So thank you for that. Honorable Elmer Bagay?
Um, yeah, sure, um, there are members of the R D C members. Um, she's, uh, everything's a good cause, she, you know, that, uh, but, um, I think, um, the reason why, um, uh, B N F, I just keep, you know, um, some of these are, are, there's, uh, I need to, there's sixty-six categories that, that you can, um, uh, put it into this, um, 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 if it's going to be ARPA related to. But just like how, um, your brother, um, um, delegate Freeland, you have see. So, um, all these, uh, um, they're very carefully, um, been, um, I guess, uh, to, 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 uh, uh, research on it, see where this project will fit. But my question is always been listening, not, not to N T A and then to our attorneys, D O J. And then to the president, why is this, there's from there, I know that there's a water power line. They call it, um, raptors, raptors, raptors devices. Uh, the, the electrical wires, they, um, pull the infrastructures. To prevent from sitting on there. So, those kind of stuff, uh, uh, it went through the process of D O J and president offices. To give that, um, to, for. When this is a case of, you know, how, um, uh, my, my brother, Freeland was saying that this, uh, this went through the D O J, that, no. How does that raptors relate to recovery? This is something that I, 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 I question that. I go through this process, but we've seen these kind of, uh, uh, approvals. Some, some, some of us will go by the, uh, the way the, the, the guidelines are, are, are written. Although, could, uh, uh, my chapters, um, other, but, uh, the, uh, this warehouse. They connect the delivery point. I thought that was for more recovery. So seems like, uh, I, I, I did today, uh, I guess the square, uh, real question is. And then with, uh, the, the question that, uh, there's a lot of questions is because of that, um, is this community-based, uh, request? Is this community-based need? The community, you see, I see, you know, that when it comes to that, you know, that there was a, um, a good, um, amount of money that was going to be given to the chapters, if this was their priority, they would have, wouldn't, with that amendment to, to, to do that. Um, that, that's why we were saying that, how can you fit into this, um, ARPA funding? To, uh, electrical, even for electrical, when we start talking about ARPA funding. Remember that D O J was saying that electrical. Electric line. Just only water, I mean, somewhere there was a home for electrical, then they redefine that and then so that then they started electrical. So what's really going on? I think we need to all look at that, and just like how, I guess, where we kind of get suspicious about. As the leaders, I think we need to understand what's really going on. You know, that they, they. We begin to have some, some attitudes or. Overall, um, leadership. But actually, so I think we need to be really careful by understanding this, to, to come back and to say. It's not like because somebody voted against it. Where are we at today? You know, is this a community base? This where this money was gonna come to the community. If it's their priority, how can they fit into that? Shinna, Dal members, R D C. Thank you.
Honorable Baguette. Health, education, and human services. Budget and finance. Our full councils. Cro. I don't. Today's legislation, a total amount of fourteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from C H S N is being requested. I'll just go on the punt, and then we'll call for the questions and vote on the legislation. Honorable Vince James, your closing statement. Oh, Hadid, uh.
I can't. I don't, um, Research Development Committee. I don't. Um, budget and finance. Um, I do. I would. I. No. The. I. I. Not. Not. Now. I. But. Then. Do. Do. She not. I. 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 I don't. I don't. I. In. No. I don't. Now. I. I. For our veterans, for our seniors. Do. I. What? I can't. Members of R D C.
Thank you, Honorable James. Honorable members of R D C, any other last comments or questions? I hear none. We'll put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Baguette?
Uh, Chairman, Kialan, which is Green from Manali. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland?
Uh, Green for Cornfield, I mean, Gennado. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
And, uh, legislation zero zero six three twenty-two. Passes with a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. On to zero zero sixty-four dash twenty-two. Honorable Brown, are you there?
Uh, yeah, uh, Chairman, this is Delegate Brown. I am on the call.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ty, could you read this into the record?
Chair members of R D C, you have a summary sheet for tracking number zero zero six four dash twenty-two. Date, March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget, Finance, and Navi Committee and the Navajo Nation Council allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund for the Chispito Convenience Store Fuel Station Project. Approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C. Section twenty-five oh one through section twenty-five oh eight. Purpose of this legislation to allocate five million from the Sisasun Fund to Division of Economic Development for the planning, design, and construction of the Chispito Chapter Convenience Store slash Fuel Station Project. Chair members of R D C, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor for this legislation is Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Tracking number zero zero six four dash twenty-two. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget, Finance, and Navi Committee and to the Navajo Nation Council allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund for the Chispito Convenience Store slash Fuel Station Project. Approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C. Section twenty-five oh one through section twenty-five oh eight. Section one outlines the authority. Section two is findings, which includes Exhibit A, an Exhibit B, an Exhibit C, an Exhibit D. Section three is allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund for the Chispito Convenience Store Fuel Station Project, approving the related expenditure plan for the project. Inter-reference Exhibit A and Exhibit C. Section four is the effective date, and section five is the savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, which is the Navajo Nation Division of Economic Development Unit for P O Box six, 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 three, Winter Rock, Arizona, eight, six, five, one, five. The date prepared on this is zero nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-one. The expenditure plan of five million dollars. Attaches Exhibit B, which is a resolution from Chispito Chapter. Approving to prioritize the building, a convenience store along Route fifty-nine. Resolution number C C H dash twenty dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-one A. Attaches Exhibit C. Budget form for the Western Regional Business Development Office, Division Branch Economic Development. Business unit is a K in the amount of five million dollars. Attaches Exhibit D, which is the Red Mesa Fuel and Convenience Center retailer. Letter dated June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Address to Elaine Young, Small Business Development Department, regarding letter of intent request for new business site lease for Navajo Route fifty-nine, Chispito, Arizona. Then you have the first report, Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Zero Zero Six Four Dash Twenty-Two. Sponsor is Honorable Nathaniel Brown. This legislation was posted on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty-three P M. The five-day comment period ended April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comment opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is Legislation Zero Zero Six Four Dash Twenty-Two read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ty. Honorable members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Chair, to Daniel.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Second.
Kialan.
Honorable Baguette, thank you. Honorable members of R D C, do you have any comments or questions? This legislation goes to Budget and Finance, Navi Committee, and the full council.
Chairman, just a comment.
Who's this?
Uh, Chairman Kialan.
Okay. Honorable Nate Brown, you have twenty minutes. Please identify your agents.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah. Uh, Chairman of Resource and Development Committee. Resource and Development Committee, uh, to our staff. Uh, my agents, I have Chilchimbito Chapter President, Mr. Paul Mattson is online, as well as Chilchimbito Chapter Manager, uh, Mr. Eugene So. Um, so Rodney, thank you. Good try. It's Chilchimbito. But, um, that, that's, um, and then I also text Ms. Elaine Young with Navajo Nation Small Business Department. Um, that is actually my fault for not getting our agents online quickly. Um, so, but Chilchimbito is online. And I can expand, Chair, when you need me to also.
Um, Honorable Daniels, so that's your statement.
Hello?
Honorable Brown, so is that your presentation?
No, 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 no. Um, no, I can do my presentation right now.
Go ahead.
Okay, my, my presentation, um, with Chilchimbito C Store, we have been working on this project before the pandemic, way before the pandemic. And, um, we also introduced the C Store proposal to the, um, American Rescue Plan funding, and we were denied twice. It was considered, according to Navajo Nation Department of Justice, um, it does not follow the federal guidelines for the American Rescue Plan dollars. So, um, we, we have tried twice, and we also have been looking high and low. But as we are all aware, Chilchimbito community was the first community to be, um, exposed to the coronavirus. Um, our people there in Chilchimbito area, um, are still very concerned about some of the travel, and this is one of the projects that they're really pushing for, so they can have the capacity, the ability to shop locally, even for, um, for, for just basic items, food, uh, drinks, uh, doing their laundry locally. Um, right now, everyone has to either travel to, um, Kanta, which is a thirty-minute drive, um, for, for a lot of our people. So just getting a tank of gas, they would have to travel to Kanta. The restaurants, the other, everything is in Kanta at this point. So the Chilchimbito Community School, their bus and their vans have to also travel to, um, uh, Kanta to fuel up. What we have learned from other C Stores is, um, it actually, a lot of our communities do use it. For instance, the Kanta C Store, I mean, the Nahuhto C Store. Um, right now, a lot of our community members use the facility. They do purchase, and I check up on that regularly. I know in our community of Chilchimbito, this is something that they, um, they wanna shop locally. They wanna shop there in Chilchimbito, get gas, do their laundry. Um, we did find a, before the pandemic, when I was at the, um, when Mr. J T Willie, um, was confirmed, I immediately met with him and his team, um, there in St. Michael's. Um, the same day, I did run into Mr. Craig Callaway out of Red Mesa Stores, out of Farmington, New Mexico. So in the, in that conversation, he did agree, um, working with Elaine Young, you know, we have been work, we have been looking high and low for a Navajo, uh, operator. We wanted, of course, our community members wanted a operator. And before, we did find a Navajo operator, Melanie Haskin, Dr. Haskin, and she was given a few years to set up the store, so she was given that ability to do so, but she could not find the capital. So that's working with the Tubus City R B D O office. And that did not happen, so Chilchimbito Chapter decided to take this project back under their wings. So that's where we're at. We have looked high and low for a Navajo operator, someone that has, um, there's a connection to vendors for supplies, and also individual that has, um, the, 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 all the shelves, the, 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 um, uh, everything that needs to go in a store. And the only person that, that dwelling was actually Mr. Craig Callaway out of Red Mesa Stores. Um, he did say, tell me, and then in other meetings after that, that he would love to, to help us. Um, right now, because of the time constraints, um, we, um, uh, according to, um, Ms. Elaine Young, you know, we, of course, we wanted to design our own, but because of the funding, um, some of the deadlines on, not, not C H S N, but others, you know, we were actually really focusing on Arpa, the American Rescue Plan dollars. We thought, for us, anything in Chilchimbito, we, we thought is, we think is, um, COVID-related, a C Store, the multipurpose building, roads, water, um, and in other projects that Chilchimbito has been working on. So that's where, that's where we're at. We have been looking high and low. Um, and also, another note is in Chilchimbito, we have not have any type of, um, Navajo Nation dollars coming back to the Chilchimbito community for any type of building, for any type of development. Um, the, the, the Chapter House, the Chapter former leadership has repaired that. And also, Chilchimbito has been a big contributor, you know, being on the Kanta Peabody mine as well. So we have a lot of our relatives who have land in this, who, who have contributed to the general fund. And I think, and I know that this is something that they would like, um, that this leadership to support in, in building the C Store, the multipurpose building. And we do have other revenue generating ideas also, not just ideas, but, and, um, you know, we're working with R B D O, small business also, so this, and that's the, my final plea, um, So this, and that's the, my final plea, um, information that I want to share is, we do have, um, all, it's shovel construction ready. Meaning that once the funding is, is approved, we will immediately get to work on it. We do have, um, we, we, um, it is ready. The land is ready. We have the infrastructure, the three phase power line, the sewers right there. Um, so we have been doing our work. So it is, it is a shovel construction ready. But now I want to, um, give the time to, I believe, should say, um, Chapter Manager, Mister Eugene Bedoni, um, as an agent can elaborate on some of the points that I might have missed and to add to this presentation. Um, Chair, if we can allow Mister Bedoni, um, some time.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Bedoni. Mister Bedoni, press star six to unmute. Mister Bedoni.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, um, members of the, uh, Honorable Navajo Nation Council. Honorable Speaker Damon, Legislative Staff, and other visiting distinguished guests. I'm thrilled to, uh, come before you this morning. But I will not, uh, waste any more of your time, so let me get to the chase here. As you know, um, twenty, early twenty ninth, uh, twenty twenty. Chisbito was the epicenter at the, uh, COVID pandemic. We lost a lot of members of our community out on the dead and, uh. It hit us very hard and us as a leader, we didn't know exactly what to do for our people. Especially when our community was subject to lockdown. And as we know, we were the only community in the last two years that was under lockdown. We had police that was, uh, controlling the roads and couldn't leave. And we had to, uh, ensure our community, our people had enough to eat. They were able to, uh, survive. But you have to understand that, once you leave many forms, there is no type of, uh, convenience store, not even a grocery store, not even a gas station till you get to, uh, Kanta. So it don't matter which way you go. You're far away from, uh, any type of, uh, mercantile. Maybe even you're not, now it's very nice. Now, I'm sure that, uh, the funding is, uh, hard to get and it could have been, uh, could have been used some other places, but we're asking you, I don't have an ARPA fund. We already applied for it. At this stage in time, um, I hope, uh, members of the, uh, the community or the committee, uh, you will not turn us away again. That's all I'm gonna add to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Bedoni. Back to you, Honorable Brown. Honorable Brown, does that complete your presentation?
Okay, I think I'm finally unmuted. Uh, there's two ways that we mute. Um, I think, um, the final note is just that, um, we have been working really closely with our B D O office out of Tubus City and also directly with, um, Elaine Young and J T Willie. Um, we have also taken our plea to the Navajo Nation Executive Branch, um, President Jonathan Nez and also Vice President, um, Lizer is completely aware of, um, this project. Um, so we have done our due diligence in letting all the departments know. So Shenanda, again, for our relatives, I know that, you know, listening to other presentations, uh, us when it could done there. And I think I'm also, um, please, um, remember Shenanda that in Chilchimbito, we have historically have not had any new buildings, no, um, I'm gonna be asking for a multi, multipurpose building, a school, um, roads. Um, so those are a lot of the, the, what we have, that we're gonna be asking for. Um, towards them, you will see that, um, some of the ideas that the Chilchimbito leadership have is, you know, even giving the world's largest rug that is, um, the pride and joy of our Chilchimbito community to, to give, um, to, to start a tour of the rug so we can have other ways to raise money, to build a museum also. So my, I'm really proud to say that my Chilchimbito leadership, um, the Chapter Manager, should say, has been thinking creatively. And our staff there, Rose Gillis, has been really been in the background, also working really hard. So, um, Benji's next door, uh, uh, and that, so you will hear also really soon, um, the reverse osmosis that they have been pushing and other projects also to bring power and to sell power also. So, eh, eh, so we, we're gonna continue to think creatively Shenanda. But this will conclude my, um, presentation and we are here for questions, sir. Yeah.
Thank you. Honorable Brown. Honorable Kialan Bagay, do you have questions and comment?
Uh, Chairman, uh, yeah, Nando this. I do, uh, should brother Mister Brown, Delta Brown, uh, sponsoring the legislation and then also Mister Bedoni, uh, providing additional information regarding your funding request. I really don't have a question and I do support legislation. Uh, but on the other hand, um, on, on the previous legislation, uh, my request to Division of Economic Development, and I don't know if there are on the line. Uh, a lot of time when we, uh, sponsor legislation, the question also comes to mind is that, what's the purpose of these divisions? If we're going to do the job of what they're supposed to do, then what's the purpose of having these divisions? Uh, Coco, I think we as the oversight, we may need to get an update report from Division Economic Development. What's the overall plan that they have in place right now? Because if they have a priority listing of funding for projects, then as, as much as five million is being requested. Other is the Division of Economic Development have a listing that we can move forward to the bigger funding that's being, uh, allocated to the state or the B I A or to tribes. And the trillion dollar funding, uh, bill that was passed by Congress and signed into law by the administration, uh, late last year. I mean, they always reference the white paper of the current administration. And what part of the region are we talking about on the Navajo Nation? Uh, Coco, as you know, that whenever we get a legislation, we always reference our chapter. Because too of my chapter is in the same situation. Touchy, I mean, uh, Cottonwood, Salana Cottonwood and Low Mountain. They're also in the remote area. Or, especially Low Mountain, they have to, the nearest that they have to, to go to is almost, uh, fifteen miles to twenty miles just to even get a gas. Cause we, they do have a school there as well. Just it's, uh, school. And then Cottonwood, Bowman at the Cottonwood School, either way, I think it's fifteen miles to Blue Gap and then fifteen miles to Chinmi. And then Cottonwood is the largest, the second largest community that I represent. For Ashla as in far as an update, the key I know, I'm sure, uh, probably that R D C got, uh, reports last Friday, which I, uh, I guess, I mean, I did miss that particular session, but there was more of a policy, uh, session. Give on us, they over fire up. Oh, I did request for update and information about that session. I apologize for, uh, asking, but again, as of today, I haven't received any, uh, any, uh, project listing that were, uh, discussed at that meeting last Friday. Within their own, uh, uh, budget. What type of fundings do they have available, uh, that, that, that they're, they're, uh, helping? Because I know, uh, I know one time, uh, like for example, hotel occupancy funding. My first thought that was, is, is being utilized to, for, uh, uh, the next development of a hotel or something of that nature. So how can we have progress, uh, of, of, of any, uh, hotel development on the nation while their revenue, the whole hotel occupancy, uh, tax is being utilized just for administration? And then as far as the administration is not doing much in, in, in the development process. Uh, I did in my, um, in my, in my text, uh, message, I did ask the R D C that is, is it possible to compile, can compile a bigger package for regional, uh, section? So I see that way is more approachable and more supportive by the overall council. Individual legislation will, will, you will probably see more legislations, uh, again, open the floodgate. I wait, I'm ready thinking right now that we're in a trouble about chain legislation requesting for a certain amount of funding. But again, it's not for me to delay or, uh, put obstacle in these current legislation. But we need a direction, we need guidance, we need input and we need recommendation from Division of Economic Development. In our area, and I know I've talked with Mister, uh, Willie almost a year ago when we had the session at Twin Arrow. That's why I say any earlier, uh, Dini. But yet maybe other delegates are, are being preference for, uh, these development. Chairman, as far as, as a, an oversight for Division Economic Development, maybe if they're on the line, maybe have them provide some information to the committee for the rest to hear of what their plan, they have in place and how much money they have in place and how much they're anticipating to receive any whatever funding that are out there. Uh, call, oh, economic development, the, you see the core heart of the administration or the, uh, the, the division is not doing much. All we're doing is that, okay, uh, 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 here's a funding. Oh, development, but yet we really don't, uh, get any, uh, uh, strong support from the, the divisions that, uh, that, that take cares of these different, uh, areas of the, uh, 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 of these, uh, particular projects. For this one is the economic development.
Thank you, Honorable Bagay. Um, Mister Tahie, for you, put on the agenda for next R D C meeting to have the Division of Economic Development to provide an upgrade, update report to R D C on what their plans are for the Navajo Nations Economic Development. And then we'll ask questions there. Thank you. Uh, Mister J T Willie.
Mister Chair.
Um, your response, sir?
Yeah. Uh, honorable members of the, uh, Resources and Development Committee, Otto, um, Shenanda, Chairman Nez, uh, Shani, uh, Honorable Kialan Bagay for your, um, uh, responses to the, um, legislation before you today on behalf of, um, Shani, Honorable Brown. I do appreciate the, um, responses and also, uh, will provide some general oversight for some of the concerns that were highlighted by Honorable Kialan Bagay. Uh, and I do, um, support that we get a, um, on the next agenda to provide a better overview regarding projects on behalf of the Division of Economic Development. Um, and I, uh, we did miss your attendance at the, um, work session last week, Friday. Um, Shani, Honorable, Honorable, um, Kialan Bagay. Uh, and I didn't get a request for information to provide. I do apologize, um, that may be oversight on our side. So we can, um, send you some of the updates that we, um, provided to honorable members of the committee at the workshop. Uh, and also again, our recommendations on that particular discussion for the administrative change to the policies for the business site leasing, uh, that the division oversees. For the discussion today, our division did provide a, um, oversight for each of the projects. Uh, we actually divided those up and that presentation took place on December twenty second, twenty twenty one. And the discussion at the time was to talk about economic development projects, five year planning, particular to the tax fund that the division administers. And we, um, divided that report up by agency and by department, which also included, as we all know, there's, there's three departments that administer the economic development projects. One of them being the Small Business Development, which oversees the Regional Business Development Offices. Our project development, which oversees commercial and industrial site development. And lastly, our tourism, which is more geared towards tourism related initiatives to support various, uh, projects throughout Navajo. And that project, I'm, I'm gonna resend this report that is dated back from December twenty second. It was presented to honorable members to highlight those, uh, projects that were in the works since twenty sixteen. And then from there, the, I believe at the time, the consensus would, would go into discuss the next plan that was being presented. However, I do understand that leadership has been prioritizing the A R P A discussions. And we did also vetted sixty six projects in regards to each region on Navajo for A R P A consideration. We also have that list that will be added to propose funding for other opportunities. The particular one in discussion today with Chilchimbito was one of those projects that was vetted through the A R P A process. However, because of the qualifications set forth. Because of the qualifications set forth in the guidelines. We were not able to advance this forward for further consideration from the A R P A funding. Many projects that were in the same situation have also uh been highlighted for other opportunities to fund. Whether it's through sales tax, whether it's through. The hotel occupancy tax. Or whether it's through any other fund sourcing, so the division has also seeked. Other alternatives for fund sourcing outside of the nation. At the January, February work session that was hosted. At Twin Arrows, we did discuss. Those external funds that each division has sought out and so the division. Um secured the Small Business Credit Initiative. And around eighty million dollars to support some of those projects further. Compared to C H S N compared to. The nation's funding, those fund sources are done through guaranteed loans. So they would have to be paid back in some capacity depending on the developer. However, as we know, uh C H S N. Um U U F B have a different routine for payback processing, whether it's through. Sales tax, whether it's through. The rental paid back to the Navajo Nation by a number of years. So therefore, I'm gonna resend this report that was communicated to members of the Resources and Development Committee back on. December twenty second, twenty twenty one. And look to further our discussions on economic development projects here moving forward. Particular to five year planning, particular to many of those projects that um Shani Honorable Brown has mentioned are shovel ready. Uh we have a separate listing that I'm gonna include, which will highlight. The projects and proposals through the A R P A process. That were not identified prior to this A R P A identification of fund sources. That list has sixty six on there, sixty six projects. Uh which range in in various agencies and some of these include. Mini Farms Marketplace, Rocky Ridge Gas Markets. Tozzo Convenience Store Cameron Farm Enterprise. That's just speaking to the central agency alone, but each of these each of these um agencies have a project that has been identified. For possible funding uh and other resources and. And including outside of A R P A because of the restrictions put in place that we're not able to advance some of these. Projects forward that we wish to uh entertain through the um. Other fund sources such as sales tax, but of course, those will be a portion of. Of funding because of the um limited amount of resources available for those. There is also, again, as I mentioned, the state Small Business Credit Credit Initiative, which will be readily available. Once that program has been identified for use, that some of these developers can use for. Venture capital investment for these projects. At the um next meeting for R D C, I'll have a um presentation laid out to highlight some of these. And also again, the um hotel occupancy tax, just to speak briefly too, also is a fun source that. Assist is with um. Administrative support for the tourism department, which doesn't receive. Any funding from the general fund. Um because of the pandemic, that fund source has been reduced. Has been a zero allocation, actually. Uh honorable members have um looked to approve uh legislation recently to support funding for the tourism department. That hasn't been completed as of yet because. Uh we still have it on hold due to the um priority by President Nez, Vice President Lizer to. Get the A R P A funding secured. And then from there, um the moratorium I know was put in place, the memorandum was issued by. Honorable President and Vice President on any kind of fund sourcing coming from. Other designated Navajo Nation resources and until we have uh come to a conclusion of the federal funds. Or the American Rescue Plan A R P A dollars. Um from there, we will advance forward um that priority for the tourism department to get funded right now, the administrative. Department has been um taking care to ensure that staff are not laid off and we see through those fund sources. Um I'm gonna pull some of the updated balances. For each one of these um allocations and also include that in a formal report. Um per the request to put us on the next agenda. And also I will share the updated list for some of the vetted projects that we have. Received through the A R P A review and I'll also include an updated report. From our last um report that we did before members on. December twenty second, which highlighted the um inception of some of these projects, there's there's about sixty five is on on that list. Some of them have been completed, which include, for example, um Denahotso Shopping Center. Uh also includes some of the industrial park and infrastructure support and development. Um from there, uh we'll see that the um. Some of the contracts have been issued to satisfy some of the needs for these projects. Um that kinda concludes a brief uh overview of some of the responses I have at this time, Honorable Chair. I'll turn it back over to you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Willie for that. Honorable members of R D C, do you have any other comments or questions? I hear none. Shana. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote, legislation zero zero six four dash twenty two.
Mister Chair, this is Daniels.
Honorable Daniels, I thought I heard something, so go ahead.
Um, thank you, what I'm the chair. Uh, I I certainly agree with the. Uh putting uh the visit economic development on the agenda. Um. Langkoba yet. Um. The night. The great. Best. Halit. Ah just been. I don't know. Delegate Brown. The great chapters. Chapter. Again. The world's largest. But the. Yeah. Moving forward. But the night. A call. The forty plus million dollars. So where are we gonna get? Dollars for our Navajo Nation revenues. Halit. Divisional economic development. The great um how many? How many projects, upcoming projects, uh proposed projects. Like um C stores, hotels. On the Navajo Nation. A call go. But the. The great on the Navajo Nation. A call. A call. Economic development. A call go. What? Uh yeah. I don't know. Though. The night. So. I've been. Oh, that in this. Oh, that in this eight to five, eight to five. But kado I see, I wanna hear something from economic development. Um. Kado. Me. I like. The great. Cause the Western Agency is a tourist area. A call. Pandemic, I understand the pandemic. But that. Within the two years. So I I I wanna see that. From the start of the pandemic up to now. The great um if we put this on the regular um meeting agenda. A call. Time. Perhaps what we can do now at the next meeting. schedule a a one day um. Uh leadership meeting with the economic development. I know that um economic summit is coming up. The spring session. That same week. So eh daya. Um. It'll be it'll be nice. To have a R D C meet with um um economic development. Eh daya. Mister Chair, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Mister Tahie. Again, would you um add the economic development? Onto the list for a leadership meeting at the next R D C meeting for approval? I don't. Shana. Any other comments or questions? Um let me go back to Honorable Nate Brown.
Oh, yeah. Um. It's. Um your questions and. Um. Quaggy. Mister Willie. Um we did, we have been meeting with economic development. So actually, we have been working really well with. Um, Miss Elaine Young from Navajo Nation Economic Development. So they have been very uh forthcoming. And with the Tubus City R B D O office. Um so eh di gaya, we we really haven't had any type of um. Uh problems or issues from our end on this Chilchambito C store. Um we have made this one of our priorities amongst others. Eh benina, um I did drop this legislation um a while ago also, so eh di. Um and 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 we have been moving this around. We were waiting on the taxation dollars. Although, so we've been moving this project pretty much everywhere. And this is where, you know, as as C H S N dollars. Um we do have the matching funds, which is already on the infrastructure that is built in Chilchambito. Um off of the highway right there across the sandstone housing. So eh di again, um when I'm listening to. Shana. You know, where where was um. So um that that's where our project has been. Although, um. The other part is the and but sitting on Budget and Finance Committee. Um. That's why I I allocated some of the funding to hire an economist also. So eh economist. And it's kinda like our investments, we have to listen to the S P and G um data and and how. Where are the revenue generating areas? Um C store. Museum. Um so again, we are Chilchambito is right in the middle of the tourism belt. So when people travel from Vegas, Grand Canyon to Antelope. Um point um area, the canyon, also Monument Valley, from there they travel. Through uh Keenta, Chilchambito and back to um Canyon Deche. Like oh, and then a lot of our people that work for the Navajo Nation Government also use that route also. So we and and that's um another reason why we've asked, maybe at your next. Um meeting in Resource and Development inviting economic development is to also have the economist. The other part that I would like to, um this is where I would need your help, Resource and Development Committee is. Um and I've expressed my frustrations also with um to the Mister J T Willie on the tourism office. I feel like we have re- we have not I not some that I feel like eh we did. Reach out to tourism and what tourism usually tells us is, oh, we just do marketing. Um so they are telling us in their policy, they do not have any type of revenue generating tourism um ideas. Right now, because of that, we started our own tri-city tourism. Um organization with um Speaker's Office Donovan Henley and now um. So we have taken that upon, we've met with uh Shanto Chapter, uh we've expressed interest, you know, with old J To and then also. Um we have um Vice President Lizer also attending some of our meetings. A call. Eh eh quaggy, um that that's some of our. Um the work that we have been doing also. A call again, when we asked the closure of Keenta Peabody Mine and N G F. Um the according to the research, the tourism is the next lowest hanging um revenue generating. Um work that we should be concentrating on. And. This is where we're working with our very own Navajo Navajo owned entrepreneurs like John Yadi with. Um say uh adventures doing bike packing. Although we're working with um other San Juan River um rafters, rock climbers, and these are all Navajo owned companies. Although we're working with Change Labs, um we are getting our people trained through them. And um so we're thinking outside the box, we're not just um going to um Navajo Nation. Uh for dollars, we're also, you know, um our our we created a nonprofit to help us. Uh no eh benina, that's where that's why w- where we're at today is. Um why this legislation is in front of Resource and Development Committee. So. Um. It's it's a lot of um um the the local chapters um sweat and um they it's it's on there. Although and also I just and and Miss Elaine Young, who is also listening, has been working really well with us and securing also the operator. So eh I. And um if Miss Elaine Young can elaborate on some of the points that we have not covered, maybe some of the questions. I know that she's online, um Chair, if you need um her to explain any of the other questions. So we have been on mu- these multiple listings. Um to to answer some of your questions and comments also, but this is where we're at and C H S N dollars is. Um another route that we wanna take and then again. Once the um C store is generating funding and then the tax dollars will go back to the Navajo Nation General Fund also. For the time being, but you know, that's that's the the current structure. So. It's not just a building that's gonna be built, it's going to bring back revenue to the Navajo Nation coffers as well. So um I just wanted to end with that and we're here for any other um questions at this time. Yeah.
Thank you, Honorable Brown. Honorable members of R D C, any other comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put this legislation to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman I will agree.
Thank you, Honorable Gay.
Uh Chairman Kaldewich Green, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart. Thank you.
Chair Green.
We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for legislation zero zero sixty four dash twenty two. Thank you, Honorable Brown. Yeah. Next, legislation zero zero sixty six dash twenty two. Also, Honorable Nate Brown is the sponsor, Mister Tahie. Could you read this into the record, please?
Chairman members of R D C, you have the summary sheet for tracking number zero zero six six dash twenty two, date March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two. An act relating to resource and development, budget and finance and advocate committees. Anton and Navajo Nation Council approving seven million six hundred and fifty thousand. From the Sisasun Fund for the construction of the Chishbentoe. Multi-purpose building, approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve N N C. Section two five oh one to section two five oh eight. Purpose of this legislation is to allocate. Seven million six hundred and fifty thousand from the Sisasun Fund and for the Chishbentoe. To construct the Chishbentoe Chapter. and for the Chishbento to construct the Chishbento Chapter multipurpose building. Chair members of RDC, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Tracking number 0066-22. An act relating to Resource and Development, Budget, Finance, and Navigat Committees. Antun Navajo Nation Council approving 7,650,000 from the Sisasun Fund for the construction of the Chishbento multipurpose building. Approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. Section one outlines the authority. And section two is the findings, which includes Exhibit A, an Exhibit B, an Exhibit C, an Exhibit D, and Exhibit E. Section three is proving the 7,650,000 from the Sisasun Fund for the construction of the Chishbento multipurpose building, approving the related expenditure plan for the projects. It references Exhibit A through D. And section four is the effective date. And section five is the savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, which is a resolution of the Chishbento Chapter of the Navajo Nation, requesting the DPMD in NCDC and ARPA reviewing committee to reconsider funding for the multipurpose museum along Route 59 and place a previous rejected C store proposal. Resolution number CCH-11-24-2021. Attaches Exhibit B, which is a letter dated to Eugene Bedoni, chapter manager. Dated December 1st, 2021, to Tom Glotero, requesting to reconsider the project, denial for another project. Attaches Exhibit C, which is the maps of the with drawn area of the Chishbento Town Track. Attaches Exhibit D, which is a letter dated January 30th, 2015, by JR and LEA Services regarding the environmental assessment of Fort Chishbento Town Track, Navajo Chapter, Navajo County, Arizona. Attaches Exhibit E, the Sisasun Fund Power Line and Chapter Capital Projects Expenditure Plan. And finally, you have attachment. Um, first report Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number 0066-22. Sponsor Honorable Nathaniel Brown. This legislation was posted on March 30th, 2022 at 6:42 PM. The five-day comment period ended April 4th, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation 0066-22, read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second. Is there a second?
Second, Chair Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Are there any questions or comments on this legislation? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. This legislation moves on to Budget and Finance, Navigati, and the full council. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I will agree.
Thank you, Honorable Gay.
Uh, for now, I'll vote Green, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries on legislation 0066-22. Next on the agenda. E, legislation 0070-22. Honorable Speaker Damon, are you on the call?
Chairman.
On twice. On three times.
Chairman.
Honorable Freeland.
Chairman, uh, thank you, Chairman. I, I did serve as a co-sponsor on this legislation, but I understand that Speaker Damon is going to be withdrawing it.
Um, the reason I just went ahead and called his name is they did text me to get it off the agenda. You know, anything that's put on the agenda for discussion, if they don't show up, then we just move on.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. F, legislation 0073-22. Honorable Vice Chair Walker is on the call. There is an amendment to this legislation. So, Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record, please?
Chair members of RDC, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number 0073-22, date March 25th, 2022. An act relating to Resource and Development, Budget and Finance Committees approving a change to CAP-35-18 Exhibit D for the Cameron Chapter by real allocating 633,333 dollars in Sisasun Fund to the new chapter building project. Purpose, to real allocate 633,333 dollars in Sisasun Fund for the Cameron Chapter, prove in CAP-35-18 Exhibit D by deleting the chapter culture center and adding the chapter building project, which includes demolition of the old building and the planning, design, and construction of the new chapter. Chair members of RDC, Budget and Finance has final authority over this legislation, which we read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., co-sponsors Honorable Seth Damon. Tracking number 0073-22. An act relating to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committees approving a change to CAP-35-18 Exhibit D for the Cameron Chapter by real allocating 633,333 dollars in Sisasun Fund to the new chapter building project. Section one outlines the authority. Section two is the findings, which includes Exhibit one, Exhibit two, Exhibit three. And section three is the approval, which references Exhibit two. Then section four is the effective date and section five is the savings clause. Attaches Exhibit one, which is the Sisasun Fund Power Line and Chapter Capital Projects with the expenditure plan. Exhibit two is the Capital Project, Capital Project Management Department, the Sisasun Project Amendment Certification for CAP-35-18. The project name Cameron Project. The date submitted was 01/24/2022. The project type is a Cameron Cultural Center in the amount of 633,333. Attaches Exhibit three, which is the Cameron Chapter Resolution. Navajo Nation in Coconino County, Arizona. Resolution number CA-OB-143-22, number four. Cameron, Cameron Chapter approval and support the reprioritization of the Sisasun Fund and listing for the Cameron Culture Center to the removal of the old Cameron Chapter Building. You have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number 0073-22. Sponsors Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. This legislation was posted on April 4th, 2022 at 9:52 PM. The five-day comment period ended April 9th, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. And there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation 0073-22, read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Daniel, motion.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Thank you, Honorable Gay. Let me go to Honorable Vice Chair Walker. You have 20 minutes and then we'll entertain the amendment.
Hey, uh, thank you, Chairman and committee members. Your staff. Although, Mr. Tahie, thank you for reading the legislation into the record. Although motion party. Honorable Daniels, Honorable Gay. Chair, committee members. Um, Cameron Chapter. So it, it, legislation. So Cameron Chapter House. I see. Other priorities, but the immediate one is to um, demolish that old chapter house building. There is an amendment that I'm requesting, Chairman and committee members. I believe there are, they are, the documents are sent out, the amendment. But you see, 633,333,000. But actually, the total amount that Cameron was allocated to 700,000. 700,000, 733,330,000. A, 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 100,000. Legislation. For it. To make the total be um, 700,000, 700,303,000 plus some odd, odd dollars and odd cents. The documents. To reflect a new total. Although, heading on the agenda or sorry, heading on the legislation. 600,000 plus. That should be 700,000. Other than the body of the legislation. 700,000. Through our amendment. Budget and Finance Committee. You can hear recommendations from RDC. But CPMD, Mr. Andy Thomas is, he'll be on the call. He would be my agent. Also, just to let you know, we do have um, one of the chapter officials from Cameron Chapter on the call also, our Vice President, Antosiazi. So if need be, these two can certainly speak to the legislation in support and, you know. So again, if need be, the agent and the chapter official can be available to speak to the legislation. But.
I believe we can, if, if there's any questions, we can go to your agents. But in the meantime, um, Mr. Tahie, could you read the amendment language into the record?
Chair members of RDC, we have amendment number one to legislation 0073-22. One, on page one at line 14 in the title of the legislation after the word project. Insert the following new sentence. Building project and changing the funding year for the chapter's demonstration farm project. Two, on page two at line 26, insert new paragraph G and H as follows. G, the Cameron Chapter also requests to move the approved 101,66 cents in the Sisasun's funding for its demonstration farm project from funding year one to funding year three. This project was approved in CAP-35-18 Exhibit four. H, CPMD has submitted on behalf of the Cameron Chapter a Sisasun Project Amendment Certification Form for its requested change in funding years. Exhibit five, this form shows the signature of the Navajo Nation Council Delegate for the Cameron Chapter as required by CAP-35-18 Section 4C. There is no change in the approved project and the original Sisasun funding amount for the project is unchanged. Three, attached is a new exhibit for the CAP-35-18 Exhibit D showing the approval. Approved Cameron Chapter Demonstration Farm Project Number D-118. Four, attaches a new exhibit five, the CPMD Sisasun Project Amendment Certification Form signed by Andy Thomas and James Adikai, dated 0, dated 4-5-22. Five, on page two at line 26, delete 633,333 and insert 700,000, 733,334 and 66 cents. Six, on page three at line five, insert the following new sentence. Further, the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves a change to Resolution Number CAP-35-18.
The Navajo Nation Council hereby approves a change to resolution number C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen, Exhibit D, project number D. One-one-eight for the Cameron chapter by deleting the demonstration form project and funding year one and adding this project to funding year three. Seven, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraph sections and exhibit as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are hereby authorized to make technical edits to this legislation. And it exhibits to implement it, the committee's intent in approving this legislation as amendment. This amendment shall super exceed all inconsistent language in any other committee amendments, which language shall be revised as necessary to conform to the intent of this amendment. Chair members of R D C, that is amendment number one, read into the record for legislation zero-zero-seven-three dash twenty-two. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie for reading the amendment language, Honorable Members of R D C. Let's have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Miss Khan, go ahead.
Before you get a motion in the second, there, there is one in the title, unfortunately, we forgot to put in the new amount as seven hundred thousand in the title of the legislation. And I have just sent that language to update the amended amount from the six hundred thousand to the seven hundred thousand dollar amount. If we could also include that in amendment one, Mr. Chair, that would be very efficient. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Khan, for letting us know. Mr. Tahie, could you also read that?
The chair members of R D C, I did receive the amendment. This amendment reads as follows, amendment to legislation number zero-zero-seven-three dash twenty-two on page one at line fourteen in the title of the legislation after the word realoallocating strike six hundred and thirty-three thousand and thirty-three dollars and insert seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four and three hundred and four and sixty-six cents. Exhibit D for the Cameron chapter by realoallocating seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four and sixty-six cents. Chair members of R D C, that is the amendment read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second on amendment one.
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you, second. Honorable Gaye, thank you. Okay, any comments or questions on the amendment? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Key Allen votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on amendment one. Honorable Members of R D C, any other comments or questions? Back to the main motion. I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Chairman, Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on legislation zero-zero-seventy-three dash twenty-two. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Chairman, all committee staff, thank you for this, um, taking care of this legislation, supporting it, voting for it. And certainly we will let the community of Cameron know Resource Development Committee has, they have their support.
Thank you. Next, legislation zero-zero-seventy-four dash twenty-two. Honorable Purnell Holona, are you on the call? Honorable Vice Chair Smith, are you on the call, co-sponsor? On twice.
Chairman?
Yes.
I did text Delegate Purnell Holona that his legislation is coming up. I believe him and Hess are in executive session. But we have Honorable Eugene So on the call for his legislation, zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two. Back to you Chairman.
Okay, we'll come back to him if he does get on the call. Honorable Eugene So, are you on the call?
Hello.
Sheila, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Tahie, could you read this legislation zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two into the record, please?
Chair members of R D C, you have summary sheet for tracking number zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two, date March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, in Act relating to Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committees, approving a change in Exhibit E to C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen for the Chinley chapter by deleting the waterline Spider Rock Phase two-point-five project and adding the waterline and sewer Spider Rock Phase two-point-five project by changing the funding year periods and by designating the Water Management Branch as the agency that will administer the added project. Purpose of this legislation is to prove a change in the project description for the Chinley Water Line Spider Rock Phase two-point-five project that was approved in C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen to add a sewer line and to designate the Water Management Branch as the agency that will administer the added project. There is no change to the one million four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six amount originally approved for the Chinley chapter in C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen. Chair members of R D C, Budget and Finance Committee has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Eugene So. Tracking number zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two and Act relating to Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committees approving a change in Exhibit E to C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen for the Chinley chapter by deleting the waterline Spider Rock Phase two-point-five project and adding the waterline and sewer Spider Rock Phase two-point-five project by changing the funding year period and by designating the Water Management Branch as the agency that will administer the added project. Section one out is the authority, section two outlines the finding, which includes Exhibit one and Exhibit two. Section three is the approval, section four is the effective date, and section five is the savings clause. Attaches Exhibit one, which is the SISHES Sun Fund Power Line and Chapter Capital Project Expenditure Plans for Water Lines, which includes the Chinley Water Line Spider Rock Phase two-point-five. Exhibit two is C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen, project change form, project to be added, which is the waterline and sewer Spider Rock Phase two-point-five. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two. Sponsor is Honorable Eugene So. This legislation was posted on March thirtieth at two thousand and twenty-two at six sixteen P M. The five-day comment period ended April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is legislation zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Key Allen?
Thank you, Honorable Gaye. Second by?
Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Any comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. This legislation moves on to Budget and Finance Committee. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Chairman, Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I'll put that to it.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on legislation zero-zero-six-one dash twenty-two. Thank you, Honorable Eugene So.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to G, legislation zero-zero-seventy-four dash twenty-two. Honorable Purnell Holona, are you on the call? On twice? On three times. We'll go to H. Approving Resource and Development Committee Regular Meeting to be held in person at Nyezi, New Mexico. At Nyezi Chapter, starting at eight o'clock A M. on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second. Motion, eh, hit us, no?
A motion, Chair, Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Second by?
Second, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Chairman, Kayla?
Honorable Gaye?
He's gonna try and find out to see if, uh, the legislation allows.
Honorable Gaye?
Uh, Chairman, um, uh, I know, I don't mind having the meeting starting at eight o'clock. But I believe, uh, from where I am, uh, it's almost a three hours drive. Uh, that mean that I have to leave almost about five o'clock in the morning to get there. Um, is there reason why we, uh, having the meeting at eight o'clock in the morning, uh, rather than a regular meeting starting at ten o'clock? Eh, yeah, because a lot of us have to, uh, because sometimes we, uh, get back late uh, on the prior day meetings and then, uh, then you have to wake up early in the morning again to travel. So, again, I don't mind attending these meetings, but again, uh, having an early meeting if we have to drive so many hours away. Uh, I guess, um, sometimes, uh, it takes a toll on us. Eh, yeah, Chairman, uh, if there's anything else, but and how if we could be able to change the, uh, the timing would be good, but if it's, uh, uh, necessary, then I'll do my best to, uh, uh, get there on time, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gaye for that. I believe this is the time that they provided us from Nyezi Chapter. Uh, Mr. Tahie, could you clarify that?
Chairman members of R D C, this time was proposed when we had the meeting with D J R Energy at an Aztec, New Mexico. This time was proposed in order for R D C to also do the rig tour that was not completed during that work session slash leadership meeting with D J R Energy as well. So in order to accommodate the time for R D C's regular meeting and to continue with the D J R um, rig tour, eight o'clock was proposed at that, at that location and time. Chairman members of R D C, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Uh, Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chair.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. Okay, I, approving Resources and Development Committee attendance and participation in the National Center for American Indian Enterprise Development, R E S two thousand and twenty-two conference from May twenty-three through twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two in Clark County, Nevada. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
I motion, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you.
Chairman, I second. I second that.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, okay. Any comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Green. I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Uh, Chairman Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. If you can contact the Craigishian, we'll submit our request for O R T as well. And I believe, um, those that are traveling long distance for the meeting at Nyezi. Uh, Mr. Tahie, if you would find out from finance section if we would need an O R T for those that are traveling so they could, um, have lodging in Farmington. We would appreciate that.
The chair members of R D C, I will draft the O R T for approval since we are, we will be staying off Navajo Nation and we will be in the, in the city of Farmington for that meeting. Back to you Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're on J, Leadership Meeting on family cemeteries with the Department of Justice, Navajo Land Department. Also with R D C. Mr. Tahie, let's have a motion first and then we'll get a date, motion and a second.
Chairman Kayla?
Thank you, Honorable Gaye. Second?
Stewart?
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Mr. Tahie, any dates open?
The chair members of R D C, I am proposing a Friday, May thirteenth at nine A M. The date could change after I start working with Mr. Roger Gaye on nailing down an actual date on this. It could be sooner. And included in this leadership meeting, we would need to include also the Division of Natural Resources and per Roger Gaye's recommendation, include Navajo land and farm boards as well. Back to you Chairman.
Probably grazing officials also. So with that request, Department of Justice, Land Department, Farm Board, Land Board and grazing officials, as well as Division of Natural Resources. On the thirteenth of May at nine A M., there's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Chairman Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chair.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, they're not voting, motion carries. Let's go back to legislation zero-zero-seventy-four dash twenty-two. Honorable Purnell Holona, are you on the call? On twice? On three times. Number eight on the agenda, close of meeting, any other announcements?
This is Holona.
Motion to adjourn? Honorable Holona, Akosila, we'll go back to G at this time. Honorable Holona's on the call with us. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record, please?
Chair members of R D C, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero-zero-seven-four dash twenty-two, date April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Title of the resolution, proposed standing committee resolution in Act relating to Resource and Development Committee and the Nobby Kit Committee opposing the United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess operation and maintenance user fee on the Navajo agriculture product industry and the water users for the Navajo Indian irrigation project. Purpose, the purpose of this legislation is to pose the United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess operation and maintenance user fee for Napi and water users of Navajo Indian irrigation project. Chair members of R D C, this legislation will be read into the record in entirety by the Nobby Kit Committee who has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor for this legislation is Honorable Purnell Holona, co-sponsored by Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. This is tracking number zero-zero-seven-four dash twenty-two. An action relating to Resource and Development Committees and the Nobby Kit Committees opposing the United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess operation and maintenance user fees on the Navajo agriculture product industry and water users for the Navajo Indian irrigation project. And section one outlines the authority and section two is the findings, which includes Exhibit one, which is resolution in A B I A P dash thirty-eight dash seventeen. And Exhibit two, which is the Napi Board of Directors Resolution, B B D dash thirty-one dash twenty-one. And then section three is opposing United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess O N, O N M, user fee on the Napi and water users of Navajo Indian irrigation project. Attaches Exhibit one, which is the resolution of the Nobby Kit Committee of the Navajo Nation Council, twenty-third Navajo Nation Council, third year, two thousand and seventeen, resolution number in A B I A P dash thirty-eight dash seventeen relating to Resource and Development and Nobby Kit Committee establishing the Nobby Kit Subcommittee Negotiation Subcommittee for the Completion of the Navajo Indian Irrigation Project. And attaches Exhibit two, a resolution of the Navajo Agriculture Product Industry Board of Directors Resolution Number B D D dash three-one dash twenty-one, requesting and recommending that the Resource and Development Committee and the Indian, Navajo Indian Irrigation Project Negotiating Subcommittee of the Navajo Nation Council, in a unified effort with the Navajo Nation Council and the Office of the President and Vice President, oppose the United States Secretary of the Interior's effort to assess operations and maintenance user fees on Napi and water users for the NIP. Then you have the first report, Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation number zero-zero-seven-four dash twenty-two. Sponsor is Honorable Purnell Holona. This legislation was posted on April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two at four fifty-two P M. The five-day comment period ended April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is legislation number zero-zero-seven-four dash twenty-two read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second. Motion?
Motion, I think.
Honorable Stewart? Second by?
I'll second that.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. Honorable Members of R D C, do you have any comments or questions on this legislation? It moves on to Nobby Kit. I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Key Allen votes green, Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on legislation zero-zero-seventy-four dash twenty-two. Thank you, Honorable Holona.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much to, uh, R D C members and, uh, committee. I appreciate it.
Number eight, close of meeting. Thank you. Don't be late the next time.
Sorry for my trying, I was on another meeting here, uh, trying to get it, let's get it straight now, so. Thank you very much again, R D C, Chairman Ness.
Akosila, Vega. Any announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Key Allen?
Thank you. Honorable Freeland, any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Gaye?
Chairman Kayla votes green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. It is currently two twenty-four P M. We are officially adjourned. Honorable colleagues and staff, Team R D C, appreciate all the work that you do for the great Navajo Nation, keep up the good work. And may God bless each and every one of you and your family and everybody else that's on the call.
Thank you.
Welcome.